Interesting as it is 7:30. The Monday, November 20th, 2023, regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Present.
Counsel Harder?
Present.
Counsel Heath?
Present.
Counsel Mack?
Present.
Counsel Tison?
Present.
Counsel Tyros?
Present.
Counsel Walsh? President Kuzinskas?
Present. Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the prayers of which is. Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to so God inspire us that we may deliver in unity and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open meeting recording notice. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter 30A subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? There are no reading of the minutes of prior meetings. We'll begin with public hearing. Notice of FY 2024 Tax Classification Hearing. The notice reads pursuant to chapter 40, section 56, Mass. General Law, the Gardner City Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 20th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the City Council Chamber, Room 219, at City Hall, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Massachusetts. The purpose of the hearing is to determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property. The hearing will include the options available under chapter 40, section 56 of the Massachusetts General Law. The public is welcome to attend. The public hearing is now open. I've already read the notice. Does anyone here wish to speak in favor? Mayor Nicholson, please come to the podium, state your name.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the annual legally required tax classification hearing, as you said earlier. The administration is proposing a real estate factor of one, as we have traditionally done here in the city of Gardner. And I'm also joined here with our city assessor, Chris Kumar, and our city auditor, John Richard, if there's any financial questions. Just to run through the usual information that the administration presents to the city council with the tax classification hearing. The projected tax rate should the supplemental budget that's currently before the city council for this evening pass is at $14.97. That equates to a $1.16 reduction from the current tax rate. If the supplemental budget does not pass this evening or is not adopted by the city council, the tax rate would be projected at $14.93. So we're still looking at a substantial reduction in the tax rate. That's mainly due to the fact that valuations in the city have gone up for the different classifications of property, as included in your packet. That was all certified by the Commonwealth Department of Revenues, Division of Local Services, through the LA 4 and LA 13 process. The valuations were done through the LA 4 process. That showed that single families in Gardner increased in valuation by about 13.86%. Condominiums, 21.22%. Mobile homes, 3.6%. Two families, 11.09%. Three families, 12.3%. Four-plus apartments of four units or more, 6.97%. And residential vacant land increased by 6.37%. Commercial industrial by 8.8. Commercial by 8.8 and industrial by 4.03. And all of those are based statutorily on how real estate sales were going two fiscal years prior in arms-length transactions. So if it was one owner of an LLC to another LLC they own, that's not included and that's actually taken out as an outlier for that. These are all arms-length transactions that took place in the fiscal year 2022. The items included in your packet for this evening were included in pages 542 to 555 of the packet. It showed our historical tax rate, again, the proposed tax rate right now, no matter if the supplemental budget passes or not, is the lowest tax rate that we've had in the city since 2010. Additionally, right now, if you look at the average single-family home values in northern Worcester County, as well as the tax rate, for those passing the current rate that we have right now would put us on par with Lunenburg. Currently, Gardner stands 265th out of 351 in the Commonwealth of Lunenburg, with a residential tax rate of about 14.6, ranks about 125 of that. So it is putting us in the right direction in terms of where our tax rate is going based off of what we're seeing out of our comparable communities here in North Central Mass. We are required annually to list the top 10 paying taxpayers in the city as part of this classification's info hearing that is included in your packet. To note in that as well is when we do this, we actually take out the utilities. Our top two highest taxpayers in the city are actually National Grid and Unitel, our gas companies here. Both of those, we have the, Assessor Kumar has the amounts that they pay, and actually number five or six of that would be New England Power, which is a different energy utility that we have here. But since we're required to give you those, taking out the utilities, they are not included in the list that's in your packet, but those are our top taxpayers that we have here in the city. Additionally, we're looking at a total classification breakdown of about 92.5% of all of our parcels in the city are residential properties of all classifications of residences. Commercial land makes up 5.36% of all of our properties in Gardner, and industrial land makes up 2.12% of all of our parcels in Gardner. That's based off of a total parcel count of 7,127 parcels. Of that, residential makes up 6,122, commercial 355, and industrial 140 total parcels across the city. The current recommendation that was unanimous and voted on by the Board of Assessors for a real estate factor of one would make it so that we have one single tax rate going across the board for all of those classifications of real estate and personal property in the city. The other option that's available to us under state law is to have a higher tax rate for our commercial industrial properties and a lower tax rate for our residential properties. We've seen across communities in the Commonwealth that that has kind of hurt business development because it makes it seem as if the community is putting more of a financial burden on the business community. And with the several economic development achievements that we've made over the course of the past several years, we want to continue that momentum going forward. We're seeing several communities across the Commonwealth, most recently, Fitchburg here in North Central Massachusetts, move from a split rate to a single rate, just further proving that this is really something that we're looking to achieve and continue here in the city. I'm sure if there are any questions, myself or any of the individuals here from our city offices and finance team are happy to answer those. Just to explain the Commonwealth's documents that you have before you, the LA 4 document is the breakdown of all of the different classifications of properties that we have here in the city. It's in terms of their valuations and their assessments that are there. So if you look at that, the Commonwealth recently certified that our residential properties in Gardner are worth currently about $1.8 billion. Our commercial properties are worth about $162 million, and our industrial properties about $77 million, leaving a total valuation of all of our properties in the city of Gardner at $2.18 billion. Of that, 378 million of that is exempt properties, so properties that are under conservation restrictions, properties that are under farm reductions, different other open space reductions there that make it so those properties are not taxable. Therefore, our full taxable valuation across the city is about $1.8 billion total. And then the breakdown for new growth, which is included in the LA 4 document in your packet, shows the increase that we see each year in terms of new growth. New growth is defined by the Commonwealth as properties, both real and personal, that were not anticipated to be completed when the budget was adopted in June. That means an addition was added onto a house, a deck was installed, a garage was put in, or a building was new constructed, but none of those count until a final inspection is done by the building department and an occupancy certificate is issued. If construction is still ongoing, we cannot capture that until that construction is fully completed. We budget on average about $250,000, which is what we did this year in the annual operating budget. New growth came in at an amount of $347,809 for this fiscal year, and mainly due to increases in new construction and personal property purchases. Of that amount of new growth, $139,829 came from residential new growth, $13,186 came from commercial new growth, $160 came from industrial new growth, and $194,634 came from personal property new growth here in the city. That remaining $97,000 from what we budgeted to what came in is what we put forward for a supplemental budget before you all this evening. The reasoning that comes as a supplemental budget now is if that is not appropriated by January 1st, we aren't able to appropriate it. But if we appropriate it now, we can actually calculate that into our budgetary projections for next year when we're setting our projected tax rate through the provisions of Proposition 2.5. You cannot put that towards your 2.5% increase or your planning for any increases in terms of what you want your percentage to be unless it's previously appropriated. Otherwise, it falls towards next year's new growth in the long term. So that's why we put everything before you this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of the petition?
Good evening. Christine Kumar, City Assessor. I just wanted to be official and say that on October 17th, 2023, the Board of Assessors did vote unanimously to recommend to you, City Council, a residential factor of one. This would result in a single tax rate estimated to be $14.97, pending approval of the city's annual recap by the Mass. Department of Revenue. Also, as the mayor mentioned, the top 10 list did not include the utilities, so actually do have it if anyone would like to see that. Other than that, he did a great job of covering everything.
Thank you. If you can just submit that to the clerk, then she finishes her bid for council.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in favor of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition of the petition? The public hearing is now closed. Before we continue, we will have a roll call vote on all motions this evening as we have a counselor calling in on the phone. Communications from the mayor orders item 11089, an order appropriating $24,500 from free cash to Engineering Department capital improvement Uptown Rotary account. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Yes, as you're all aware, with the disruption in traffic we've had in the upper con, construction has begun on a new rotary plan. They will be completing, if they haven't, probably this week or next. For this season, it will continue in the spring. Our responsibility in this was the design phase, and this amount of money, this $24,500, is for the completion of the city's design and its responsibility in doing that. All the construction costs, however, are then borne by the state. So I'm not quite sure what the percentage breakdown is, but it comes down to something like 10 cents on the dollar for the total construction. So Finance Committee was very much in favor of recommending this, and I so moved the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Donald Lowitz to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11090, an order appropriating $13,600 from free cash to the Wayside Pond Dam project account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
The city has been working with the Corps of Engineers. They're responsible, not for repairing the dams, but to make sure that we do so. This is a requirement that they have. It was pointed out to us that if something did ever happen in the future, this is part of the process that we must take at this time to make us eligible for any assistance if there were a catastrophic failure or something like that. But this is all part of the ongoing process of doing this, repairing this dam, and I so moved the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Donald Lowitz to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11091, an order appropriating $156,420 from free cash to the park grant match account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
As you're well aware, the, all the playground equipment was removed from the old Oliver Case Playground. It had served its life, it was dangerous. This is a grant that we've applied for to replace all of this with new and modern and safe equipment for the children. It's a 70-30 grant. If in the event it isn't granted to us, and we're quite sure it will be, obviously, we would rescind the motion in the future. The reason we want to have this pass now is it would probably have to, we would like to have it done during this fiscal year so that the children would be able to take advantage of it in the spring. Finance Committee was in favor of this, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Donald Lowitz to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11092, an order appropriating $220,000 from free cash to Mass. Trail Grant Match Account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee discussed this with the Development Director. This is all part of the Mass. Trail project that we've been working on for so many years. This portion is our match so that ultimately it will connect with the bridge that will cross Route 140, a very dangerous area now, but make a continuous bike in. It's a multi-use trail, it's not, shouldn't be just as a bike trail. But this is the portion that will go along Crystal Lake. It's a very important step that we are taking, and Finance Committee was very much in favor of this, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Donald Lowitz to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to the Finance Committee, is indeed this part of the bridge that we've been hearing about?
This is to bring.
Help?
Counsel Ron Cormier?
If I may, this is to get us to that bridge site. That'll be the next step. This is to bring us down through the, across by the golf course, down through where the new power station is, and down to 140.
Counsel Boone?
Just, is there anything that we've heard of about that?
That is the next phase.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
It was discussed, and the DPW director and the city engineer had said it is in the plans, the state is, it's a priority for the state, and something that's on the table in 2026, I believe, is their goal. But obviously, that could change, but that's their plan currently.
Counsel Cormier? Counsel Boone?
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11093, an order to raise and appropriate $37,849 for various departments for the salary and labor budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is part of the supplemental budget the mayor had alluded to during his time on the tax rate. He's, as he said, new growth came in roughly $350,000, budgeted for $250,000 with a surplus of just shy of $100,000. This particular order, $10,800 of it, will be to cover the stipend for the K-9 Rocky at the Police Department. This will be budgeted in future budgets going forward, won't be obviously part of a supplemental budget or free cash expenditure, as we had a few meetings ago. The remaining $27,049 is to help replenish the Fire Department's overtime budget. The chief did inform us that we, it's currently down only one full-time firefighter, so that is good news, the numbers are getting closer to full force. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Donald Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Cormier to approve the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11094, an order to raise and appropriate $59,960 for various departments for operating expenditure budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Thank you again, Madam President. This is the other portion of the supplemental budget. $47,460 is for the purchase of new sidearms, firearms for the Police Department. The city has not bought them since 1989. They have not, the force has not got new firearms, sidearms since 2011, when the Garden Police Relief Association donated them. Chief McAvine also informed us that this will be a smaller caliber, so saving on ammunition costs going forward. The remaining $12,500 is for the grinding of debris and stumps that are at the landfill. This is a normal cost that we incur. It's not maybe every year, but every few years to grind up the debris down there. Half of it comes from the general fund, the other portion is from the solid waste removal enterprise fund. So this is the general fund portion being funded here, a little different than normally. Normally, it's done through, possibly through free cash, and we're doing it through the supplemental budget. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Donald Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to approve the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11095, an order authorized in the city to borrow $2.2 million for the purchase of a new ladder truck for the Fire Department. Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This lone order is to be in the process of purchasing a new ladder truck for the Fire Department. This is something that we've known for, I believe, at least two years almost now, not longer, that it was going to be something that had to be purchased. There is a significant lead time to get equipment like this. The three to four years from the order of the vehicle to its arrival here, this expenditure will cover the apparatus itself and the equipment. We have been putting some away in the vehicle stabilization account. Currently, we have just over half a million dollars in there. That will be utilized as a down payment per se, but we do have to appropriate, borrow the entire amount, the 2.2 million. The $500,000 will then come out of, cut that down later on. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Donald Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk, this item does require eight votes, two-thirds votes of the council. Just a note there. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11096, an order appropriating $513,506.11 from special purpose stabilization fund to Fire Department new vehicle expenditures. Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is the other portion of obviously the previous item, removing the money from the stabilization account to the new vehicle expenditure account. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Donald Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Communications, item 11097, a measure to accept chapter 59, section 522H to establish tax exemption for Gold Star families. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Donald Lowitz.
Thank you, Madam President. This measure will extend local property tax exemptions to the outlined Gold Star family members in the city of Gardner. All the other exemptions that are in that packet are already in place. There is this one section, 22H, that is up to the, here in Gardner, up to the city council to adopt. This will extend this to parents and guardians of military service, people who gave their lives serving our country. Finance Committee was greatly in favor of this, and I move passage of the measure.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Donald Lowitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to adopt the measure. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Mack?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11098, a notification from the mayor regarding upcoming appropriation requests for Fire Department roof repairs. Counsel Donald Lowitz?
Thank you again, Madam President. This notification from the mayor discusses the needed repairs to the roof at the fire station. This roof is original to the station in 1978.[1641.88] There were some repairs and patchwork made in the early 2000s. Roof has become a health hazard, and additionally, it's my understanding all the insulation has had to been removed from the apparatus base. Therefore, heat is also just escaping, rain pouring in. The Finance Committee was greatly understanding that this needs to be done. The mayor outlined that his plan would be to take this from the city's stabilization account, but those orders would be in front of us at a later time, and he just wanted to keep us updated. So I moved to place the notification on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11099, a petition for home rule legislation entitled "An Act Revising the Charter for the City of Gardner." Is there a motion, Counsel General Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to send the home rule petition to the Massachusetts General Court.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, seconded by Counsel Tyros to send the petition to the Massachusetts General Court. Is there a discussion on the motion, Counselor Harder?
Yes. It wasn't a landslide vote, but a good portion of the voters do want this change. I believe the total votes cast were 3,755. In favor, 1,928. Opposed, 1,320. So even though I do not approve, no feel this change is necessary, I'm elected to bring the voice of the people to the council floor and make their wishes known. In light of that, I will be supporting this vote.
Thank you, Counsel Harder. Further discussion? This vote also requires eight votes, or two-thirds votes of the council. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11100, a measure to adopt the creation of district improvement financing districts for the downtown and Mill Street urban renewal areas. Is there a motion? Counsel General Lawrence?
Thank you again, Madam President. I move to adopt the creation of the district improvement financing districts for the downtown and Mill Street urban renewal areas.
Was there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, seconded by Counsel Tisoni, to adopt the creation of the diff districts. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 110, 11101, a notification from the mayor regarding parking meter study committee. Counsel General Lawrence?
Move to place the notification on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, seconded by Counsel Tyros to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11102, a notification from the mayor regarding grant funding, community one-stop-for-growth awards. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. This communication from the mayor informs the city council that the state has awarded Gardner just over 1.5 million dollars that will be used on various projects throughout the city. That has been outlined in our packet. This is exciting news for Gardner, a great award granted, and I move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel General Lawrence to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11103, a notification from the mayor regarding gubernatorial appointments of Gardner residents' employees. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. In this communication, the mayor has informed the council that the governor and the secretary of veteran services has appointed and sworn in three Gardner residents to the state's new Veteran Service Advisory Council and Women's Veterans Advisory Committee. Very much like to thank the three residents, Director Cabrillo, Mr. Villila, and Ms. Tibo Muniz for their service to the city. It's been recognized as the state appointments, and wish them good luck in serving their state. I move to place this communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel General Lawrence to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. There are no petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, reports of standing committees?
Madam President.
I'm sorry. Item number 11104, a notification from the mayor regarding employee retiree insurance plan change. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The city has an insurance advisory council, and they voted to accept a new aspect of the city's health insurance plan that will lower costs for both the city and for our employees and retirees. So this is good news. It was unanimously voted, and I move to place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Tyros, seconded by Counsel General Lawrence to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. There are still no petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, item 11061, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner by adding a new chapter to be entitled "Chapter 504, Wage Theft Protection," which shall provide for protections for workers and employees of contractors working on city projects. Counsel General Lawrence?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on this at the recent meeting. This ordinance will require additional reporting by employers who work on city projects. The main changes here are the creation of a sign-in, sign-out log that needs to be given to the city on a weekly basis, as well as that certified weekly payrolls must also be reported to the city. The goal here is to protect the wages of workers as well as those contractors who are doing business here in our city and for the city appropriately. Underpayment of wages prevents legitimate bids from being accepted by the city. This ordinance has been approved in other communities across the Commonwealth. Purchasing director Cormier spoke on it briefly at our meeting and has reached out to some of these other communities, and they have seen no unintended consequences of passage of this ordinance. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move to send the ordinance to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, seconded by Counsel Tisoni to send the ordinance amendment to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack?
Yeah.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Appointments Committee, item 11083, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Deborah Pond to the position of Human Resources Director for term expiring October 31st, 2026. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would kindly request to take item 11083, 11084, and 11085 together and request more time as we have an Appointments Committee meeting scheduled for before our December 4th city council meeting.
The committee requests more time on item 11083. Item 11084, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of David Hackett to position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring October 30th, 2026. And item number 11085, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Deborah Pond to the position of Disability Commission Member for term expiring October 30th, 2026. If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time. The committee will be granted more time. Safety Committee, item 11086, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled "Vehicles and Traffic," Section 24, entitled "Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets." Counsel Harder?
Yes. This went in front of the Safety Committee. The Safety Committee was in agreement, along with the police chief, who was also in agreement. This is under a 60-day review or trial period, whatever you call it. So with that, we are requesting more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Unfinished Business and Matters for reconsideration, item 11080, a measure to adopt a factor for real estate and personal property taxation for fiscal year 2024. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Madam President, I make a motion that we adopt, number one, a single tax rate for the city for the fiscal year.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawrence to adopt a factor of one for real estate and personal property taxation. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to point out that garbage tax rate was the second highest of all communities in North Central Mass. So I'm hoping the new rate of 1497 is going to make us more competitive with our surrounding communities. But obviously, I'm glad it's going in the right direction, and so happy to see all the development going on in the area and people coming in from out of town and improving our downtown, which has always been a pet peeve of mine. I'm also was happy to see the top 10 taxpayers no longer on that list. My wife really thanks. Thanks all of you for that. And that's it. Thank you, Madam President. I support the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Boone. Counsel Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I think as accurately pointed out, it's the second highest, but Gardner is also surrounded by towns which have not only a different form of government, but also different services that are offered to residents. So I think it's, it's good to keep an eye on, but also a point of pride, I think, in our city that we're able to offer such services to our residents and still have a competitive tax rate with the surrounding towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Counsel LeRue, President.
Counsel Mac?
Counsel Kuzinskas? Yes. I just hear this from the public hearing, but my question is for the mayor to be assessor. It's great that we can draw up the tax rate, but I want to make sure that there's no plan to re-assess houses this upcoming fiscal year because that would be the purpose of our, of lowering our tax rate. So somebody could just give clarification on the assessment process?
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Counsel Mac, are you able to hear me from there?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. The way that the assessments works is those are included in your packet, and I think it's either the next item or the item after that. The LA4, I believe, is the certified valuations of the city that's done through the Commonwealth's Department of Revenue. That has to be submitted and certified by them. As such, if you want to see the individual property breakdown by address or parcel number valuations, those also had to be certified by the Commonwealth through that process. Those are available on the city assessor's website already and have been there for the past month. So those valuation fluctuations or changes or any of that that are based off of two years prior's sale by law have been certified as part of that result. Our only involvement with that is to submit to the Commonwealth the certified sales, or the qualifying sales, if you will, excuse me, that made those assessments go in those trends. Those qualified sales also had to be certified by the Commonwealth through that same process, and those qualifying sales, the addresses and the dollar amounts of those sales are also listed on the city assessor's website. So any changes in valuation would be done through that process as required by law, and has already been completed by the Commonwealth and is available on the assessor's website.
Counsel Mac?
Thank you, Mayor, for that explanation. No, thank you very much, Mayor, for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Mac. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawrence?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel LaMack? I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item 11081, a notification from the mayor regarding certification of LA-4 Assessment/Classification Report FY 2024. Is there a motion, Counsel General Lawrence?
I move to place the notification on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawrence, seconded by Counsel Tyros to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Yes.
Council Ronacormier?
Yes.
Council General Outt?
Yes.
Council Hardern?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council LaMach?
Yes.
Council Tison?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeses, the motion passes. Item 11082, a notification from the mayor regarding certification of Gardner LA13 Tax-Based Levy Growth. Council General Outt?
Move to place the notification on file. Second.
Motion made by Council General Outt, seconded by Council Tyros to place the notification on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Council Boone?
Yes.
Council Ronacormier?
Yes.
Council General Outt?
Yes.
Council Hardern?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council LaMach?
Yes.
Council Tison?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeses, the motion passes. Item 11088, a request from Council James Boone to have a special meeting of the council as a whole to hear a presentation by Somax Circular Solutions. Council Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. Leading up to a motion, last meeting, we had a little bump in the road. I passed out a four-page comparison chart for this particular company that does some work to help keep from landfills becoming more filled up and costly and the possibility of something that can actually generate revenue. If these numbers are right, the year's zero cost for the sludge landfill is $7 million and change. For this new process, which I'm not saying that we're going to approve it, I just want to get more information about it, it's $6 million. So just that one zero, year's zero cost is interesting. The 20-year projected balance, we would lose $10 million from the sludge landfill and we gain $11 million from the HTC gasification. And again, I know we're not, I'm not asking that we're going to approve anything at a meeting. I'm asking for a special meeting so we can hear more, the public can hear more. So with that said, I'm going to make a motion to ask for a special meeting to hear a presentation from Somax to give us more information and feedback. Thank you, Madam President.
Second.
Motion made by Council Boone, seconded by Council Tisoni for a special meeting of the council as a whole to hear a presentation by Somax Circular Solutions. Is there a discussion on the motion? Council Heath?
So going off of the information that I received, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam President, but going off the information I received, you know, I'm definitely willing to listen and understand what this is, the offer is. But from what I got out of it, it's, we would have to truck in or basically bringing a lot to be able to be profitable, like from other towns, cities, things like that. So hopefully during, if we go ahead and pass this, this special meeting, we're able to get more clarification on such to know. I'm willing to listen and hear, but I just want, you know, put that on record.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Council Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I think as counselors, we're all open to hearing information, news, discussion about the city. The concern I have with the counselor's motion is for a few factors, one of them being that the Public Service Committee on our November 3rd meeting discussed this proposal at length with the DPW Director and the City Engineer. It was about a 15-minute discussion we had at the end of our meeting where a very realistic overview of this proposal by Somax was explained by the City Engineer in extremely lame terms that were pretty understandable from my comprehension, not being, you know, studied into solid waste or removal processes. So the, I think there's two issues, right? There's the issues of what the study shown and how it was gone about potentially, but I think the first issue to address is the properness of having a special meeting about a topic that the city executive department has already made a decision on and the city council has actually already funded an appropriation to continue that study where the city chose to not go through the Somax solution but to expand its sludge landfill process following NEPA and the Mass Environmental Protection Agency and DEP regulations. The city actually had to find alternative solutions and evaluate them. So I think there's been a lot of study by the city, a lot of investment by the city to look at alternative solutions. I believe the City Engineer even said he was really excited about what the potential solution Somax had might bring to the city. As Counselor Heath had brought up, I think there's issues with their proposal from a financial and a risk perspective, a regulatory risk, I'll be specific, perspective. So I have a few concerns about the council acting on having a private entity give essentially a sales pitch on the council floor where there is no executive action to prompt such a meeting. And I really would hope that the counselor might consider the consequences, potentially legal consequences, of us having that meeting with skirting procurement laws and other processes that the city and our state has established. So, and actually, having fulfilled the request of his constituent to look into the matter, I think we've learned a lot. I would, you know, recommend watching that 11-3 Public Service Committee meeting. I certainly learned a lot about the subject and I think you could go back to the resident and explain that this is an executive decision. This isn't a legislative matter to bring forward and follow up with the executive office if you might consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tyros. Further discussion? Council Cormier?
I just mind, or more in the form of question, with the meeting, I doubt that there would be, but a cost in bringing this forth. But the second one I have is have we checked with the, in fact, the city's purchasing agent, I guess we are subject to the bidding process or anything, would we be putting ourselves, this is what I'm afraid of, and I don't have the answer to that this evening, in jeopardy as far as the bidding process? It would seem like we are providing favor to a vendor and not to other vendors because it is a vendor product. And I wish we had that answer from the purchasing agent, if you will, whether there is, if we are putting ourselves in legal jeopardy. And I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Council General Outt?
Thank you, Madam President. I was also at the Public Service Meeting on the 3rd. And while there were all the concerns that Council Tyros put forth, there was this, I feel that the DPW Director and City Engineer Aliva properly vetted the project. There is only one other, is my understanding, municipality using this process in the entire United States, possibly North America. It's an untested, untested product, if you will, that if doesn't work as described, could be something that puts the city's sewer and water rates at risk down the line if we can't get rid of the product or it doesn't work as advertised. That being said, it really is, as has been spoken to, it's the executive department's purview to vet out the projects, come forth with a plan for the city, for then the city council to make a decision on whether we think we should go forward with that plan. As Counselor Cormier stated as well, we're opening the door to having companies come in and have favor for their product. And this isn't just for this item on, in front of us today, it could be for any item going forward. Who do we invite? Do we invite for this? Do we invite others now if we start to allow this and we have another project in front of us? Do we have all the bidders come forward and present to the city council? I don't think that's something that's feasible to do or that as the city council, we're supposed to be doing. So I will not be in favor of scheduling this meeting. I think it's already been dealt with by the mayor and his department heads and we should move on and not have this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Council Boone?
Madam President.
Council LaMach?
Yes. You know, I appreciate where Council Boone and Mr. Russo, who, you know, has had us in range on the project coming from, but first and foremost, I do agree with the legal process and the lack of this not going to the executive department. And as Council General Outt said, we let one company present, you know, I feel we would have to let every company present, you know, who is giving us a bid. You know, however, on the other hand, I think people, you know, I myself and others might want more information. And I also want more information from the director of the DPW and the city engineers as, you know, they presented it to the public service, but for the rest of the council, what their concerns were. So maybe this is something that's a community meeting, it's not something that's done through the city council and those who want to attend to get more information, good. But again, I mean, this would have to be every company that is considered and not just for this project, but those looking forward. So we would be setting a precedent. So I do just have concern about the way this is, this is being proposed through the council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Council Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate all the comments. And I think it sounds like we're automatically voting on giving these people a contract. And the whole purpose was just to get more information and also let the public hear about it, too. So, and if other people want to come in and present their particular ideas or what can help the city, then by all means. This is something that we paid for a study and we, and I do respect, you know, the opinions of the Public Service Committee and others. I personally still think it has merit to bring it into the attention of us as a whole, thinking outside of the box, not just the executive committee, and also bringing it forward to the public so they can hear about this. And so I'm going to still continue to ask for this special meeting for the presentation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Boone. Further discussion?
Um...
Council Tisoni?
Yes. One of the reasons why I seconded this motion was because I personally would love to be more educated on the subject, as well as I believe it would be beneficial just to listen. And I think it's our job as city counselors to listen. I'm not saying to listen to every pitch that comes along, but as Counselor Boone just mentioned, we did pay for this study. And to get more detail, to get more understanding of possibly what they can do, it doesn't sound like they're doing, many municipalities have signed on with this particular company, but at least get the opportunity to get a little bit more educated on the actual subject. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Tisoni. Council Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I know this is my second time, but I just think it's important to be clear that the city did have to pay for the study to be done. We did have to send a sample to this company. And these are all things I learned in the Public Service Committee meeting on 11-3. I can't stress enough for folks to go to YouTube, read the meeting minutes. A lot of information was discussed. And I want to be clear that we paid for that service and we used the final report from that company in the decision to continue on the path of expanding our sludge landfill because that was the best decision made for the city. So the study was paid for and information was gathered from it that was used in the decision-making process. So it certainly was not a waste, it was not of time or money. And I think we have to be very careful here about the difference between listening and making a decision. I completely agree with Counselor Boone that, you know, the debate, debates can lead to, you know, decisions kind of being, coming out in clean air, but I'm really concerned about even the precedent, the legal jeopardy put to the city by even offering to listen to a private company on the council floor without a RFP process, without executive department action. It's troubling to me and I find it, I find it improper and I will not be supporting scheduling this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tyros. Further discussion? Council Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. Just like Counsel Tyros, it's my second time. However, I was, I was initially in conversations about an alternative, you know, a while back. And I am definitely for listening to other options. I don't have a problem with that. However, as the other counselors have expressed, listen to one vendor, I don't know if that's the proper way to go ahead and go about it. So as I was for, so to be clear, I'm for listening to other options. I don't know if I'm actually now for this one company coming in and pitching. I just want to put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Heath. Further discussion? Council Ronacormier?
It's my second time. It's Chapter 30, 31B, the regulations by the state that determine how we proceed with the bidding process. I'm afraid this, this could be construed, if nothing else, as circumventing that process. And I think, I'm not an attorney, it seems like we're putting ourselves in jeopardy. And I'd rather not.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll. Again, this item, let me just go through the motion again. The motion is for a special, the motion is to schedule a special meeting of the council as a whole to hear a presentation by Somax Circular Solutions. It was made by Council Boone and seconded by Council Tisoni. Any further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Council Boone?
Yes.
Council Ronacormier?
No.
Council General Outt?
No.
Council Hardern?
No.
Council Heath?
No.
Council LaMach?
No.
Council Tison?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
No.
And President Kuzinskas?
No.
Two yeses, seven noes, the motion does not pass. There is no new business. Council comments and remarks? Does any Council seventy, Council comments and remarks?
I have one, Madam President.
Council LaMach?
I just want to make sure the public is aware of a communication we received last week on November 14th by the director of the DPW, Dave Arnold, that due to the shortage of staff at DPW, that it will be much needed patience with the residents this year. We will be short handed for cloud drivers, due to the low rates for contractors. It wasn't competitive enough and we were not able to hire additional contractors. So not all these streets be cloudy that time of the year. Parking lots will take longer. So I just think it's important for going into this winter that the residents are aware of this to begin with, you know, so they can be prepared to know that this will be clean, but it's just going to take some additional time due to the staff. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council LaMach. Further discussion? I mean, I'm sorry. Further Council comments and remarks? Council Tisoni?
Yes. I just want to take the, this opportunity to wish everybody safe and healthy, happy holiday, happy Thanksgiving this week. Just be cautious on the roads when we're traveling and hopefully everybody can enjoy the time with their friends. And same to all my counselors here. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tisoni. Further Council comments and remarks? Council Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I mentioned it earlier that I'm getting comments from people out of town coming to Gardner and they're nice comments because they're saying, what's Gardner doing? Look at all the building going on, re-improvements and downtown, it's looking great. So I'm really, really happy to hear that instead of the past. I've got some really negative comments about what Gardner looked like and so I'm so happy that the city's moving in the right direction. And other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And until our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further Council comments and remarks? I will entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer. Motion made by Council Tisoni, seconded by Council Boone. The clerk will please call the roll.
Council Boone?
Yes.
Council Ronacormier?
Yes.
Council General Outt?
Yes.
Council Hardern?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council LaMach?
Yes.
Council Tison?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeses, the motion passes. Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joint deliberation and action witnessed during the course of this meeting. Blessed O Lord, all who are gathered here, and the peoples whose representatives we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.